This time we'll ask to approve the minutes in January 23 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Isaac Johnny. We have a motion to accept. And second, any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not all, in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, at this time, we don't have official report. We do have some committee reports. Budget Committee met and has some budget minutes. Committee members.
The Budget Committee met on February 27th of this year. We had a few things that come out of committee. First thing is the committee we had approved to bring before you. The school system budget amendments, the highway permits budget amendments, the library budget amendments, solid waste, and the general fund rate for this. I think you've all got a copy of them. If you have any questions, could your representatives run ahead?
It's committee recommendation, no second required. Vote with a huff. Okay. No seconds required. Does anybody have any questions for today? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else?
I do, sir. All right, the next thing is that it was asked by Mr. Irwin that we look at raising the bid threshold for several years. It's been $10,000. The state did. The state legislature does give counties this stuff. He's now a right to enter. He said that's a $25,000. The committee discussed this and they come up with a recommendation of raising the bid limit to $15,000. That would be a recommendation from the committee. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Irwin can ask.
I'd just like to clarify that. I hope I didn't misrepresent that most recently committee. This is not a request or a blank check to spend up to 25,000 or in this case 15,000 as the committee agreed to. This is simply another regulatory layer on top of all our personal issues that we have in place. The money still has to be in the department's budget and it still has to be approved by the O to spend the money. This is just asking that the threshold for having to let bids out be raised up to 25,000. And the reason the state legislature agreed to this in May of 2022 was to relieve paperwork and regulatory burden on departments. So again, please understand, it's not a blank check. Yes, you spent 25,000 before you got an immediate approval or anything. It's not that at all. It is simply that if you are buying business services from the same vendor, the same types of business services from the same vendor, any fiscal year where it would exceed the bid threshold, then you gotta let that purchase out before bid. It's gonna slow down the purchasing process by probably at least one month just by means of having to get the bidder together and to send it out, advertise it, then to get the responsive back and open the bids. Kind of like if you were working in a factory and that machine that went down, maybe it's gonna cost you $17,000. Well, with the bid threshold of 15, you gotta put that out before then before you just go ahead and buy one. So we're asking to be raised to 25 to reduce the paperwork burden on departments and regulatory burden. Thank you.
The committee did recommend 15,000. So I think you would have to vote on that before you call in his request to go to 25 because the committee did discuss it and it recommended 15,000.
All right, let's vote on the $15,000 limit. Roll call vote.
Jerry Low.
Yes.
Kevin Crawford.
Yes.
Bubba Edson.
Yes.
Al McKenna.
No.
Jerry King.
Yes.
Andrea Hollis.
No, it's one of 15,000. All right, let's vote.
Rock, gap.
Most of 15,000.
Johnny Garner.
No.
Carolyn Higgins.
No.
Ann Wolf.
Yes.
Dwight Bingham.
Yes.
Renee Phelps.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Tim Pro. Our State Committee recommendation 15,000. Barry Smith.
Yes.
Brendan Matthews.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Ricky Hardy.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
14-4. All right, I have a whole more thing. This also was a request to come out of Mr. Irwin's office to do away with the county debit cards and replace those with credit card for the limit of $10,000. And so that is a requested also. Do a good job, Dwight. To do away with debit cards that the county has and replace them with credit cards with a $10,000. And I think this would make that much more safe and secure. And that was a recommendation from the committee also.
I think that's just why it's called a vote. All in favor of that recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Don't.
Thank you. The rule of fire and I wasn't there.
At the last meeting we had here, we had a discussion about what deadline I had here only in the county. And it's impossible. So they decided to bring for our committee to discuss this situation. We didn't get one night. We all come conclusions to bring our attorney on the situation to deal with the problem or situation. So we get to make a picture of my fellows. And he did, and I did, and I'm up tomorrow. They want to pull this off, repair this office. And I think that he shows a piece put right away. My question was, that piece put right away, it must, it must profit. That profit is much larger than this quarter. He then he bought 10 profit, piece put right away. So we discussed about it. And he ran, and I said we can recommend the full vote. Thank you, Rose, as is known in residence, known as as is. That's our recommendation. Full committee, give a full vote.
Any discussion? It's committee recommendation, no seconds required. This is asking for discussion.
I have a question. Or is for saying has either some county or something been any improvement on my brothers?
That'd be a.
Give it up to the code?
Yeah.
No.
No, it is not.
It was not being taken, and that's what it is again.
How far?
Was I under? Yeah, I heard forty something. They found what they're called. Richard.
I thought it was talking to a thousand dollars. I ain't heard that. Eight hundred to a thousand.
The road report's got .08.
That's back in Rad and Range too. We started it now at three five. We talk about the five to four up to the other end.
So can Todd tell us what needs to be done to?
If not, we just gonna ask the office for the as is. And even if they want to have it, pretend that's road, that's on the road.
If you take this road down, how many other people do you want to do their ride?
This has belonged to the county for years already. It's not that we're accepting it. It's already belonged to.
What was that here?
And it's been parked several times over the years.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, roll call on that.
Jerry Low.
Yeah.
Kevin Crawford.
No.
Bubba Edson.
Yes.
Al McKenna.
Yeah.
Jerry King.
Yes.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Ann Wolf.
Yes.
Dwight Bingham.
Yes.
Renee Phelps.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Brendan Matthews.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Ricky Hardy.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Oh.
What?
No.
Okay. 16-2.
Solid waste committee.
Yes, the solid waste committee met on March 2nd in this conference to discuss some complaints of retirement related. My factor about accepting a brush and bringing from freeze ice storm after questioning for answer, the contact after visit, agreed that there were no need to anymore. So we do not make any motions or on motion made with the government meeting. There will be any meeting of solid waste committee in March 14th.
Solid waste bill. That's tomorrow.
Five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. No action necessary. Mayor's report.
Hey, Mr. Edson. As most of you know, we had some storm damage Friday the 3rd of this month. Which resulted in replacing the entire roof on the public safety. We was fortunate to get it done and replaced as soon as we did because there was no damage reported inside as far as I know. We also had some damage on the fire station number one just to gut it and all was blown off. And I believe he was out there working today and he finished up the trim around the top of the metal. And come to me, excepted simply, but I think it's pretty well completed. Also, we have still funds coming from the opioid. It's coming from different sources. I attended two meetings in Nashville this past week or week before last. We're getting funds from different sources on the lawsuit and each one having their own usages and requirements to spend them. They're planning to have more meaning of what people understand where they won't be used in the wrong way. I would like to request assistance to help in grant applications and letters and intents for funding for some projects that we got going on. And I'd like, if you wouldn't mind, the Southwest Tennessee Development District to assist us in applying to them. I think there are improvements that can help the county and they know more of the specifics and how to do the paperwork than we do. Even though you can attend three or four classes they still will know the better way to apply for. And there for projects like we're helping out on our playground project and also for Dixie Youth Park, helping apply for other grants out there for their lighting and possibly our playground equipment for out at park. Also our TCAT, they really do an addition out there for us. And they're are able to use some grant money from the governor that is given to the TCAT facilities. And we own that building and we need to be thinking about writing an agreement or something that we need where we can lease that building to them where they can go ahead and build and help furnish and give more places out there at our TCAT facility. I spoke with our lawyer, Marty there, and he said he could help us with that. And I can do my, have it in the near future. Also, this past week, West Tennessee Healthcare Representatives District this past week is expressing needs to continue our EMS service in Chester County. And we have, we've asked them to come here tonight and help explain and answer the questions that you might possibly have. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Adams, Vice President of Hospital Services, and Ms. Joyce Knowles, Chief Executive Director of the EMS. And I believe each one of you got the letter and what they, the needs it is. And if y'all don't mind, if they have any questions, instead of trying to answer myself, I ask them to take them. And I guess.
Thank you, guys. Have a copy of the information I provided to the mayor. Real quickly, I'd just like to go through that and you an idea of why we're here. On about the third page of the handout, you'll see the Chester County 2022 metrics of EMS. If you look over the middle of the page there, you'll see for the four years, last four years, the number of responses and the number of transports we had. The number of transports have printed down. And if you look in the next to last column, you see where it says repetitive. Repetitive calls are those we would do for dialysis or wound care patients. And those types of calls are reimbursed very well. Medicare has changed the reimbursement rules for us. So you can see that starting in 2021 and 2022, compared to the previous two years, how far down those numbers are. So that means we've had a very significant downturn in revenue. So that's something that is out of our control. And those repetitive transports were used to offset the costs for, say, ten care that doesn't reimburse our costs or self care. Somebody doesn't have insurance and then we don't get paid anything. So that's one of the biggest issues we're dealing with in EMS. The other issue is one that we're all dealing with, and that's the effects of the pandemic. EMS nationwide, we already had a shortage of staff before the pandemic started. And now it's gotten even worse. So to keep competent staff, we had to pay quite a bit in bonus money and also had to increase our rates twice during COVID just to keep our ambulance staff. So that along with inflation, you've got all the supply expenses, diesel costs increased. And so two years ago, we were breaking even basically in the service. In the last two years, out of the six counties we serve, we are losing money by those. So I'm here tonight just to try to help explain that if I can in any way. Invite any questions? If I can't answer it, Joyce knows and Shannon Taylor here also to help answer any questions.
How much do we pay at the end?
Nothing right now. Yes, sir. I think that's been since 2018.
Okay.
That was in the agreement when we built the building. Yes, sir.
Only five year contract.
Only five year contract unless it was caused. And I'm not an attorney. So our attorney, you know, if there's any questions about the contract, then I can get in contact with our attorney. I'm just here to speak to the operational issues.
So what you're saying is we're going to have to pay starting July 1st more, we're not paying anything, but be charged as a counter. How much?
$419,000.
For the year of 2023, 24?
Yes, sir.
And how much over your mayor?
Normally there would be escalator on the contract, 2% or whatever inflation was.
So 419 plus 2%.
Yeah.
It was gonna be one.
Okay.
How can we trust the contract? We, I've been in here 18 years.
Yes, sir.
When Mayor Killers was mayor, West Tennessee Healthcare come in and we was paying $175,000 a year. They come in, they wanted to increase it to $500,000. At that point, Mayor Kill for seven hundred would bid. And then West Tennessee Healthcare come back today. They will stay and some of their company and they went losing money. So we moved on with no interest. Then we come along to 18. We take, we've got wheel tags. We've got wheel tags that have been paid for subsidies since 1976. We took that revenue stream to build this bill. That revenue stream is paying that debt service that bill. So now for us to come up with $419,000 a year plus 2% every year, we're having to have to look at another revenue stream. Y'all have by far the best employees there is. Y'all staff, I have nothing great face to say about your data of that. But I'm looking at from a contractual agreement with West Tennessee Healthcare. It doesn't matter what we write. Are we gonna be right back here in two or three years? And it's not good enough. And I still don't know where we're gonna go with that kind of money yet, just to be honest with you.
I understand. I understand your concern and distress that it puts on you. As I can just speak from my organization. And our organization, since the pandemic has started, we have not had a positive bottom line. So we're looking at every business unit. And this business unit will have to stand on its own. And so, you know, that's where we are right now. I can't speak for the future. I can just tell you where I am right now. But y'all have raised rates on the service, have you? To the individuals, when you pick them up and carry them to hospital or wherever you carry them? Our rates are very competitive. And in healthcare, the vast majority of what you are paid is determined by Medicare. Medicare pays us a fixed rate. Medicare Advantage pays us a fixed rate. Kid Care pays us a fixed rate. The only thing that can change a little bit is you add on for mileage and that can increase. But we don't get to determine in healthcare a lot of what we get paid.
It's my desire that we could come to somehow agree. But I just, I think we're a long way apart. I'm just one person. But to me, we're a long way apart. And we're gonna have, we're gonna have to work something on. If we do, and we agree with y'all, it's just, are we gonna be in here in four and a half years? We're four and a half years into this contract. And this is a small rural county. $400,000 is a huge chunk of change. A hu, that's rocky. How, how do we ever purpose access that fairly allocated?
Oh, Lance, what does it mean for you?
You give me technically, bro. Because our revenue stream is already obligated.
Well, you know, of course, I'd rather be here if we haven't had a pandemic. You know, that's, that's not something we can improve. Like I said before, I'd rather be anywhere here telling you that we need $419,000. But that's where I'm at.
10, 14, 16.
How much?
It was like 10, 14, 16, 16, 14.
And one other thing I'd like to say, we, I think we've been here since 1995. And we will stay here. We want to continue to provide the service, but we just can't afford to sustain the losses. You know, we went from four years ago having 212 days of cash on hand for an organization and that was 150 today. So we funded all these overs with the pandemic out of our savings. As part of that, we've had a small downgrade and a borrowing rate. And so you guys look at all that, right? Make sure you can borrow money when you need to. So we, we're just at the point where we can sustain the losses.
Has West Tennessee Healthcare actually purchased the anguluses that were ours? That's part of the agreement as well?
I don't think so. We have not. Joyce can say something that happened to you.
So that happened during the change of the mayor's and some of that paperwork got lost. And the mayor talked about it a couple of times. And so we're waiting on some appraisals to get to us. And so that's the best we can account for is about $115,000 that is still owed to you guys and we're working on it. But I have accounts to answer too. And they won't let me pay bills just because we had a handshake agreement and we can't find, there's no agreement. It came somewhere around the time we signed the contract, which was August of 18, which is when we were, by the time there's a transition, I believe, to the mayor's office. And so I think we have the ready appraisal. If we can get that done, we're gonna work through that. And we've just been, it's been back and forth. We're, you know, it's been on everybody's calendar, but it hasn't got done. And when we met with the mayor the other day, he reminded us of it. And so I think, you know, I don't have the paperwork and I'd be happy to make sure we get that taken care of as soon as I can get some paperwork and all things. Any fault on the mayor, things just felt in practice during the transition.
Y'all are kind of the same, but we are, we can't just write checks. I totally understand. And I'd like to emphasize to you guys that we know the spots you're in. I mean, like Mr. Anderson said, we don't want to be here. We don't want to be asking anybody for any money. And in 18, when we did this contract, we were doing pretty good. But then Medicare came in and two things happened. A lot of people switched over to what's called Medicare Advantage. And they're a managed healthcare plan. And they basically pay payments on what Medicare pays. And so the baseline percentage of commercial, how well you do, and nobody has a good commercial pay rate right now. And on some of the paperwork that you got, you should be able to see the commercial pay rates and the daycare and all that. But right now, it costs us about $700 to make a call. And we're getting reimbursed at like five something. So we're losing about $160 on the call here. And it's not anybody's fault. Every day we have people standing in front of state in front of the feds trying to get reimbursement for EMS. And you guys love that, you know, it's a needed service. And so we're trying to get that. If we could get, you know, to your question, sir, you asked about how can we trust a contract? Contracts and contracts. And we don't want to be here and say we need out. And but if we could, somewhere down the road, if reimbursement for EMS goes back up, we're gonna be coming back to you. Hey, look, we're in a better spot. Let's do this again and help you guys out. Don't take my word for that. We do it in the county. So about three, four years ago, we went back and reduced their subsidy. So we're not trying to do nothing, but just get to a break even point. And, you know. We understand where you're at.
Well, this will be, we're not gonna do any action just tonight.
Yes, sir.
Because there's still some unanswered questions out here. Budget Committee will be meeting starting soon with budget and stuff. And they'll be dealing with this. And hopefully you'll be invited to answer questions.
That's very big, right?
They've got other options to look at, I think, I understand. So you'll be notified when we, when we do that. Appreciate your information tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Question? How many counties are you going up?
Five.
Five counties.
Out of six.
Out of six, you gonna go up on five. Why don't you go up on out of six?
Because the sixth county is actually broken even. And I'll tell you why it's broken even. It's because of volume, the number of cars in the next. And it, I'll tell you why it's broken even, it's because of volume, the number of cars in the next. EMS is based on volume, you have to staff for the what is. And, you know, the amount of time that an ambulance is busy, you know, kind of determines how much money it takes to run it. That's how much revenue you got coming in, so. And I, I just want to kind of focus out here, and I may have to turn my badge in when we leave. Mr. Anderson is my boss, but we're not going to leave you high and dry. And, uh, we got a hard line on July 1st, but as long as we're working really hard at it, we're going to try to, we, we want to make something done over there, but we would never walk out leaving without an ambulance service. And we have been here since ninety-five. Some of the people that are working here, we're probably working here in ninety-five, not going to say that. Um, but I, I think you do have a good bunch of people that work here, and they have the best of interests because most of them live here, so.
What county are you talking about, Ben?
Uh, Madison.
Madison County?
Yes. And it's the volume that comes out of the hospital.
Where's all our patients go to?
Um.
Most of those going to go to Jackson, Madison County?
Yes, sir.
I understand.
Yeah.
There, the one thing, Joyce, I really should have pointed this out, isn't that the paperwork you got helps about utilization, uh, unit utilization? And so each ambulance that you have, you want it to be busy at least twenty-five percent of the time. It's better if it's busy thirty-five or even higher. If you go higher than thirty-five percent, the risk you're running is not having an ambulance available for a nine-one-one call. In Madison County, we're running forty-five percent utilization. So, um, it's, it's more compact, we've got more ambulances, and so we're better able to respond to emergency. But that's why we have a surplus. Here in Chester County, I believe, the number's twenty-three or twenty-four percent utilization. So, twenty-three? Yes, sir. So that's, that explains why there's not as much revenue in this county. But you've got to have enough ambulances available to respond to emergencies. So when you take decreased reimbursement, low utilization, increased costs across the board, that's, that's why we're here.
Again, nothing that I've directed towards y'all is any ambulance towards your staff on the level of the county. Thank you. I would trust Enya, but we, we as a legislative body, we've got to figure out how we're going to come up with that money if we even can, and it's got to be from the taxpayer's account.
Yes, sir. And we wouldn't expect anything less if we need to do the work. We just want to make sure you guys know we want to be here. And, um, we, we want to be the provider for you. And just, you know, answer any questions you got, if you got some later or whatever, where we'll try to get other people, or if you got any ideas, any ideas.
We'll try to, the chairman's good, we'll try to get the West to be meeting together as, as quick as we can, so we can start moving forward. That's all.
Sure. Anybody else have any other questions for?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I heard you had anything else. This, uh, community development program, but it's good.
He's got it. Where we have a filling hole, or we've got a light now?
I'm sorry, anything?
Where we have a filling hole over the medical building wash? It's full of water, it's a bit dangerous.
Right side top of the, the primary, the chamber. I'm hoping somebody else has expressed the need to, and about doing the other.
We might be put something down.
I would, I found again the question, you can look.
One other thing, I would get back to us on when the extension of being on was.
Yes, I, I, I visited the Department of Commerce and Insurance there a couple of times, and as long as I didn't see one mayor, but she did call him back. And, uh, she expressed that she had nothing to do with the hire date or, or term for a, a code divorce or a count. She was just telling their dates that they had for their training and for their test. During the time that he was first hired, they wouldn't even allow him the test to be taken, or they wouldn't have the training. The only thing he could possibly done is done online. If, if he got prepared, he wouldn't have been able to even take the test, they wouldn't give him at that time. And, uh, since then, though, since they've opened up and given him the test, he has took the test and passed the month. He has one accreditation, and, uh, as far as the county being self-sufficient, though, where we can, he has to have three accreditations. But, uh, he has fulfilled what the county asked him to, but the time points are the same. He had, at that time, he had to have one accreditation. But since then, the accreditations have changed to three.
So they change it after, it's happening? Can he inspect anything, or?
Yes, he can inspect everything, but residential, a residential home, it still has to be done by someone with three accreditation.
So what county can he inspect?
Yeah.
Well, uh, outburied, condominium, or, uh, barns, everything except residential.
Well, who's the residential, who's making residential, as I heard, when I asked him, he said that's residential stuff.
Well, that, that's what we had applied for originally. We wanted to help our contractors where they wouldn't have to be waiting on state inspectors. Uh, and when we applied and asked additional state, the, uh, only, the inspector only had to have one accreditation. And during the time that we hired him, uh, that was still one. But during, from then, I think for the first year, it was changed to a residential inspector or had to have three. And the state was permitting that inspector, but it just wasn't a local inspector for my counties. It either come from financial counties or harden counties. And as of now, they're still doing the residential homes.
What about the county, do you think, and what about others?
Uh, that is still being worked on through the state, and there's no new properties being built and split off as far as I know. But the past, the, the past, before two thousand seventeen, I know the head said before his grandfather then, and as long as there's no change of deed, it's, it's up to the state.
So when is this time of, Deiono? I mean, I'm.
I hope the mayor's going to get back to us on that, but.
Well, that's what I'm saying, he, they, they don't want to have a state of the counties.
Right, we're in charge of that.
Trying to get qualified or certified.
But the, the commission said one year, and they gave him another year.
And I think that was because he couldn't do his.
It's been another year almost, when is that kind of?
July 1st, I think. Has he said how long he would take him to get his, his remaining certifications? Have you heard him say that?
He says that he has a schedule, but they won't let him, you know, he can't go in and take them all at once. He can take one, then I think a month later, two months, he can take them all.
But that changed, he was only supposed to get accredited for one, and then last year, they changed it for eight?
Yes.
So we may have.
Set the, for the exemption for our county to be exempt, that we wouldn't need to stay there or stay there.
All of those.
And so did we have somebody else come in, somebody else to send him to come in and do the residential, or we paying him and this other person too?
It, the, the, see, the fee goes to the state. Now, when we did the exemption and for the county, when our inspector gets certified, all of the states in just county.
We're not paying him at all then?
Yes. Now, he's still getting paid on everything except the people that buy permits for residential building. The money goes to the state. All of the permits and everything, the state's in care.
What is Deion's salary here? Do you know, Gary?
I was talking to him, I'm sorry, I believe, around forty-eight.
Yeah, it's around forty-eight, he's now.
And, uh, I don't know exactly how many residential building houses it had.
Can he enforce all these darkness and trash and tire and stuff like that, is that one sort of thing?
Well, he's also, that's our maintenance code.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that can't he enforce that?
Yes, he can sign.
Well, there's, there's steps in which he needs to go up on that to enforce, um.
So who did I send any fifty dollars to?
So, uh.
Who did I send any fifty, just your calls, huh?
Uh, I'm trying to work with him on helping, helping in that situation because we had to send a certified letter, and we've been recommended, ask our county lawyer to send a certified letter to the owners of the property. And after that, we can turn it over to the judge if it's not done, or maybe any progress to go that way.
I'll be honest with you, I, I was under pressure from the very start, when he was hiring to, uh, maintenance code, and he could go out and leave a guard and, and write tickets, that's been the impression, I've been out there the whole time.
He's not doing that.
He can leave them, like, he has been leaving them, uh, doors, asking, a note on the door and asking them to, uh, clean up the property and all, and it gives them a certain, certain date, and he checks back with them, and he said, and when he checked back, they have made some account, some of them have. And we, we need to work out something else with our judge and see if I can get a picture of that.
So no way they've written a citation or anything, no way they've been fined for?
Well, you, you can write them a, he can find them, but then he's got to be caring, he's got to be, uh, the judge has the rule on to have them paid.
But he's not doing that, right?
They said that that has to be worked out within the county.
Deion couldn't be here, his mother's real safe.
Yeah, Deion, he plans to be here and give a report, and he can be able to ask some questions, our next county commissioner.
Well, you know, if he's got to get two more accreditation, whatever, certi- certifications, okay, so if he can only do them every so many months, he's not going to be in at July, you know, July is just right by our corner. I don't know when he's going to be.
He says today's the best of hours.
I don't know, we need to set up, but I think he had set it up for his next one, but I don't know. I, he hadn't been in the end of the last few days, they hadn't asked, they haven't asked.
I think his mother's trying to.
No, she's, she's, that's a second name, her, her name is, needs to be exonerated.
So did Deion answer?
We'll move on. We have two resolutions that were not on the agenda, because one was, the auditor's calling me after we had done the agenda, and said that there was a resolution that was, uh, discussed and passed in the Budget Committee in, uh, twenty twenty-one. And it was the resolution to declare the county jail at Workhouse, and Justice County Sheriff's, who attended the workhouse. That was done in the Budget Committee, but for some reason, it never got done as by the county commission. And that's copied up in your packet. We, the passage needs to be passed retroactive to July the first, twenty twenty-one. Anyone have any questions? You've found out a lot.
I make a motion.
Second. Motion's been many, and second to approve this resolution retroactive to July, that's red.
Yes, sir.
Retroactive to July twenty twenty-one, July 1st. Any discussion? This requires a roll call vote.
Jerry Love.
No.
Kevin Faulkner.
Yes.
Flava Edger.
Yes.
Alvin Kenan.
Yes.
Jerry King.
Yes.
Andrea Holler.
Yes.
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Wyatt Bingham.
Yes.
Renee Phelps.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yeah.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Brendan Matthews.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Ricky Hardy.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Eighteen and five.
And the second resolution is community development block grant program that was established by HUD that's focused developments in being the housing community development deeds consistent with the objective and set forth in the document. Justice County, this doesn't, uh, does not cost us anything. On the average, it's the very highest membership authorized to execute and submit an application with appropriate assurances to the state of Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Office, program management, requesting a fiscal year twenty twenty-three community development block grant, addressing food insecurity grant in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and five dollars and forty-two cents refunds to complete the necessary projects on the first Baptist church in the very highest membership by designated form of financial law from the Department of Sports, amended into conforming Chester County those acts, and assumes such duties as are consistent with set position. You agree with this, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Any questions? Doesn't cost us anything. I think we're good. Motion, Kevin Faulkner, second. Flava Edger. Any other discussion? This requires a roll call vote, too, I believe.
Jerry Love.
Yes.
Kevin Faulkner.
Yes.
Flava Edger.
Yes.
Alvin Kenan.
Yes.
Jerry King.
Yes.
Andrea Holler.
Yes.
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Wyatt Bingham.
Yes.
Renee Phelps.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Brendan Matthews.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Ricky Hardy.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Eighteen and five. Mr. Chairman, the mayor, you said something about wanting to apply for some grants for, for, uh, DCU and stuff? Is that something that we need to, that we need to vote on?
Uh, no, not yet, because we have to get a letter in the tent first, and then it had to be approved to select to get the food and everything. I was going to ask for their help to do it, though.
Any other committee reports? I think we've heard from several committees out of the bed, I haven't remembered anybody else.
Ken, I'd like to follow up on a question that was asked in our Sullivan Committee. Jacob Butler asked, trusty, a question about how many people are paid? Did you get that answer? I apologize, I don't have that with me. You don't have your packet for the meeting tomorrow, maybe? Sullivan, I sent Amber those numbers. You know, the Sullivan Committee member have a packet for the mall?
I've got my email, it's on the.
So, no, I do not.
Hey, can we refer that to Marv, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
For you, really.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Savannah, Library Report, you have, if you'd like to tell us.
Hello, uh, Mr. Sam, he was asking us some questions. Um, basically, we wanted to talk to y'all, not the board, it's like, uh, multiple patients, and we did our question for the board. And you did our question for the board, the library board, sorry to be specific. I think we have a board chairman here tonight as well. Uh, I think we've got a briefing, maybe, trying to get floor plan going that would stay in our budget, but also meet the needs of our public, staff, and lab for some future program as well. So these are the four plans that Mr. Stevens has to have some out to nail. And basically, tonight, we're simply giving some approval for these four plans from the commission. The library board has already approved them. One thing we're trying to do is get a $100,000 construction grant, something that we need to spark the application, this floor plan that are, that's part of the application. So in that regard, you are a little bit of the same, so you can't go over the current cap until we get something like this. Um, so feel free to look it over, um, hear the questions, Mr. Stevens, and have a chat with our chairman here as well.
Uh, I'll just, uh, kind of add, this is a colored up, uh, floor plan, uh, kind of show the areas that we are adding and reconstructing. Uh, did a little bit of renovation due to the admin area, uh, giving them some larger meeting spaces for activities, uh, and rearranging the library, uh, when we, when we do the addition, we'll push the materials, uh, kind of to the back and have all the children's areas, uh, kind of where they are right now, uh, enlarging those a little bit, uh, for what we've got currently. And, uh, right now, uh, our estimates are right in the ballpark for, uh, the money, money that's available to us. Uh, we have some additional things that we would like to do, and if the library can find some other funds, some other sources, uh, we will include those as well, uh, some automatic doors at the front door, and, um, uh, some interior changes as well to the finishes, uh, we kind of paint those kind of things. So, uh, we, as, as, uh, as Savannah said, we're, we're doing what we can with the money that's available to us right now, hoping that we get some more to take care of some other things that we would like to include in the project.
And you mentioned up the automatic doors, there is a grant that has already been submitted for that, I think it was submitted about a week and a half ago. It would give us up to $10,000, which basically just adds buttons on either sides of the doors, doesn't upgrade the doors itself, but it would take care of the mechanisms.
Do we need any action on this?
I wouldn't think so. It's, it's basically just a bad job. We will continue along with this plan, uh, and, uh, get drawn ready to, to bid, uh, publicly bid the projects and the contractors, and, uh, at that time, we will probably be looking to let y'all know where we're going, uh, making sure that we're all still good and, uh, are ready to proceed with, uh, awarding the contract to the person who built the project.
I think for current purposes, we do need just approval for the all forms, just on the preliminary floor plan.
I'll make the motion to approve.
That's second.
Motion's been made, seconded to approve the preliminary floor plan. Anybody have any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any vote? Thank you. You have anything?
Yes, I will let you on that. I'll leave a different application out before you call me up here. One of the things we will want to be, because of resolution, um, just saying that the account on Joe Holland's list from our account is in fact available, that's something that I will need for our application.
How'd you hurt your arm?
Christmas tree.
We won't go into that.
Christmas tree, so that's really good, that's a good one. Well, if y'all have any question, Mark, please feel free to reach out to me, email me just anything I haven't answered your question yet.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Patricia, did you want to address the group tonight? We have something here for you from 911, did you want to address the group for that or anything?
Not that I'm aware of, but I would like to say thank you to the county, uh, for being a root of the buildings in the storm last week.
Okay. We just, we just, this national, tell them.
Uh, yes, uh, the first week of April, we're celebrating National Poetry Week, we're actually celebrating one early this year, because the next week is when I'm just actually being class, actually at Memphis and Jackson, and, which is the National Poetry Week, so we're actually celebrating, um, a whole first week of April. So that's the one week that we do, because they're often, um, they're not ever seen, they're only heard, um, when they're dispatched out, or when they're heard on the telephone and their words aren't there. And so they're often forgotten, and so that's the one week we set aside each year. We should be something nice for them and, and we're going to have them. So if you see any of them, if you guys know, you know, if you see them, you know, just say something nice to them, and just say thank you for the job that you did, and we appreciate what you did.
Didn't know if I was supposed to call on you, or not. All right. How the pacemaker go off there? No, no election commission, the board, they have nothing. Uh, anybody have any other business to come up with or something? No worries. Go.
Just real quick, just to inform the community that our boys' basketball team traveled today to go to Marcus Park. They'll be playing tomorrow at 1:15, and, uh, there's access to that, you can watch it online if you do choose to do so. Some of you may know, but historians in the county have said that the last time the boys traveled to the state tournament was 1958. So we're very excited about their opportunity. They're playing Memphis Ridgeway tomorrow at 1:15, and if they win again, they'll play again Thursday at 6:00, and if they win that game, they're playing the big game on Saturday. So we look forward to that opportunity. The boys left excited, had a lot of fanfare with all of our students and staff. They came out and, uh, escorted them out with our, our law enforcement, local law enforcement, both city and county, so it was a great day.
Go Eagles!
Any other business? No worries.
Yes, sir, we have three. Mr. Bo Bates, G W Sharad III, and Jennifer West.
Good proof.
Second.
All, the votes have been made, seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Any vote? Chair.
I'm not going to stay alone in your new building, you're supposed to take building up here. If you give one, fulfill. I mean, thank you.
I've already had a couple of projects, but yeah.
Uh, e- even though the election commission, uh, did get them on the agenda, I do have an updated, uh, updated floor plan and, uh, and front elevation, uh, for the building. We are proceeding on to that project. Kind of the same as with the library, uh, not a whole lot to report at this moment, other than we are continuing to work with Kathy and the election commission to, uh, get their needs taken care of in the building.
This requires information?
Yes.
No, I understood there was nothing come up.
Right. Um, I, I didn't know if the package was going to get us on the agenda, but I probably think I probably didn't make it before I, P anyway, uh, so, um, for all those county charities of floor plan, we've been working on the exterior patterns of the building, uh, we're working on it right now. We just received a survey for the, is that the one that has the leg? Okay. Uh, the leg did not show up on the survey. Uh, but we are, uh, we will take that, get the building signed, get the property, uh, and continue to, uh, complete those drawings to have mid packages ready, uh, here in the next month or so, so we will, once we have that created, have everything worked, we'll come back to you again. We're right on budget, uh, we're actually under budget for, uh, the money that was allotted, like I said, we just got the surveys, we're not exactly sure how much money we're spending on that, but I think we're going to try and fund a lot.
Leadership chess is here. Anybody want to, will they stand with the leadership of the chess? Thank you, I'm glad you're here, for our recognition. Pass the, we've done the no worries. Chair, by the motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All in favor, please stand up.